Good evening. Do I have a motion to open the May 7th, 2025 Regular Business Meeting of the Harrison Central School District Board of Education?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Michelle, would you please do a roll call?
Kelly Posack.
Here.
Kelly Mulvaney-Meikin.
Here.
Benjamin Weldon.
Here.
Samantha Jaberga. Placido Dino Puccio.
Here.
Robert C. Sullivan Jr. Jerome Valente.
Here.
Please fill out the fire exits in the front and the back of the room.
Thank you, Michelle. Do I have a motion to recess and to executive session? We have student and contractual matters to discuss.
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We are recessed. Do I have a motion to reopen the May 7th, 2025 Regular Business Meeting of the Harrison Central School District Board of Education?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Michelle, would you please do a roll call?
Kelly Posack.
Here.
Kelly Mulvaney-Meikin.
Here.
Benjamin Weldon.
Here.
Samuel Jaberga.
Here.
Placido Dino Puccio.
Here.
Robert C. Sullivan Jr. Jerome Valente.
Here.
Please fill out the fire exits in the front and the back of the room.
Thank you, Michelle. We're going to rise for the Pledge of Allegiance in just a moment, but please remain standing as we take a moment of silence as we honor the lives of two community members that have passed. One, Alessia, a student of ours that was taken way too soon, and Mr. Geller, whose life was long and full of wisdom. So please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have one acceptance of minutes from the April 22nd, 2025 Business Meeting. Do I have a motion to accept the minute?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. At this time, if we have any members of the public that would like to address the board, you may do so by approaching the podium and just please state your first and last name if you plan to do so. Okay, it does not appear that we have any public participation. So moving on to some wonderful news, there's tons of exciting news district-wide. We recently, on April 26th to the 30th, we had the DECA International Career Development Conference, which was held in Orlando, Florida. It is the highest competition that DECA offers, and there were 275,000 students enrolled in a DECA club nationwide. And our high school club had 11 students qualify and attend, and the 11 students who represented both Harrison High School and the New York State DECA. The students competed with either a business plan or a test or a presentation of their ideas to judges, and Addison Valente, who qualified for the third straight year in a row, was awarded a Medal of Honor for role play, and she also received top 10 in her event. So I think that's super impressive, and I think it's the first time ever that we've had a student place three years in a row.
It's never happened.
Yeah, it's never happened. And Arthur Guitaz was also awarded a medal in honor of his multiple choice test score, which was one of the top 10 in his event as well. So major kudos to our students on their accomplishments. We had nine LMK students receive awards at the Westchester Regional Middle School Science and Engineering Fair, including first place for energy sustainability, Ovia Gandhi, and special awards to both Ovia Gandhi and William Chung. They were the top 10% and qualified for the Thermo Fisher Junior Innovation Challenge.
Which is the next level of difficulty in that competition. So congratulations to our middle school teachers on that.
Romina Alden and Casey Cassidy Manzo Satterfield participated in the Congressional Art Competition for District New York 16 hosted by Representative George Latimer. Their work is on display at the Neuberger Museum at SUNY Purchase and is part of the nationwide high school visual art competition, and it can be potentially chosen for display in the U.S. Capitol. So we have students thriving in all sorts of directions. And then speaking of which, Lou, I'm going to let you take this one because I know you experienced it. I wish I was there, but for the adaptive theater.
Well, Ms. Buke and I may cry about this, but Leah Moore, who is just a brilliant, brilliant educator in so many ways, she asked us last year if she could run an adaptive theater program for our PACE program. And I happened to have my whole special education department here last night, and we're all going to be so proud of her. But she did something that was so unique. What makes her so special was about building community as well as providing an opportunity. And she paired kids over on the spectrum with neurotypical kids to do a production, and the entire cast, both their neurotypical partner and the child, were onstage for the entire time. The piece was selected to showcase the strengths and assets of each of those kids. But more importantly, and this is what makes Leah so magical, she educated the audience before they got there on how to see and appreciate what they were about to experience. We had teachers who were a part of that. Rachel's challenge, the whole group came in to experience it. And it's interesting because people always say to me, what a wonderful experience for those children on the spectrum, forgetting that the real transformation is sometimes the neurotypical kids. I spoke to those students, and they are changed forever by the ability to see and appreciate people that sometimes we misunderstand. So the power of that experience. We also brought kids from across the district in our FACE program to experience it with their teachers and their teacher aides. So if there was ever an example of what it means to bring people together for the right reasons and to help us all become, I don't know, just more empathetic and to be able to see each other, it's not an accident that Leah, who will graduate this year from Bank Street College with her administrative degree, was chosen by her cohort to be their speaker. Her extraordinary character and humanity just fills the room. So thank you, Leah.
Moving on to the high school theater students, the Eastern Student Artist Guild Awards recognize outstanding performances in non-musical theater productions, and Harrison received numerous awards and nominations for its production of Radium Girls, and the winning students will perform a one- to two-minute monologue. So we had Best Actor in Drama was Lou Castellano, as well as Best Supporting Actor in a Drama, Rosella Panichia, and then Radium Girls for Harrison as a whole won Best Ensemble in a Drama and Best Drama Production. So congratulations to the entire team, yes, every facet of the production.
Radium Girls 2 is a fascinating piece. It's based on a true story of how young women were exploited and asked to paint with radium-laid paint with a brush in their mouths during the World War II, and they were all victims. And the piece is about their lives and how even after it's determined that in fact they were poisoned, no one helped. It's a very powerful piece, and the kids were phenomenal. So congratulations to them all, and congratulations to Mrs. Haberly for that production.
I don't think I've ever had an update where I don't talk about the debate team.
That's very true.
Years in the making of their impressive accomplishment. So the debate team took four top 25 places at the National Tournament of Champions in Kentucky. Four debaters reaching the elimination rounds is a team record. Jack Borman placed 12, Jack Gessner placed 16, Reese Potash placed 18, and Brooke Shiano placed 22nd and was the 20th speaker. So congrats to all. They're ever impressive.
And just to say out loud, if you're hearing this for the first time, this is the national tournament of champions. So 50 states, we had those kids, four of them placed in the top 25 across the country.
Our Relay for Life, a bunch of the students are raising awareness and planning for the Relay of Life event, which will be held at Harrison High School on May 31st from 4:00 to 9:00 p.m. And more information about that will be available on the webpage and the district homepage. And I know that the students at that time, like they send out their voice calls. It's great.
They do a great job.
To get a lot of participation.
See, the beam of light in the back is the pride coming off the high school principals who read all these things.
Okay, moving on to athletics, the 10th Annual Andrew Girdjana Memorial Game is this Saturday, May 10th, versus Rye in Silver Lake Park. The ceremony begins at 3:30 p.m. and the first pitch will be 4:00 p.m. And congratulations to our, to the Huskies on winning the baseball as well. The 13th Annual Dave Bassett Tournament, they defeated Valhalla 10-2, and Dante Lanza was named the tournament MVP. And in regards to softball, Barbara Jo Coppola broke the school record for hits with 131. So congratulations for winning that record.
And the former record holder was Jenna Webb, Mrs. Webb's daughter.
Oh, really? Lila Berkery, a lacrosse player at the high school, was awarded the prestigious Con Edison Award. So congratulations to Lila, and I know she earlier this year signed to play D1 at Fairfield.
Fairfield, yeah.
Fairfield. The Boys Lacrosse, actually, they're currently in first place in Section 1, Class B, and on Sunday, April 27th, the Huskies participated in a community, I love this, community service project, and they cleaned up parks and areas around town of litter and garbage. And Jacob Burak was named Low-Hud Player of the Week for his performance on the field during the week of April 21st.
And he's the goalie.
So congratulations.
Yeah. They're having a great season. That's a historic season for them there in first place. Congratulations to them.
The Boys Golf, Captain Jake Hurwitz has earned
Five.
Five Harrison High School Gold Balls this season. Wow, that's super impressive for this season, and the season's not even over. Marco Bruci, an eighth grader, had the low score against Echester of the day in his first Harrison High School Gold Ball, and seventh grader Daniel Purpura shoots even par, leading Huskies over Echester, and received his first Harrison High School Gold Ball. So congratulations to our young and impressive golfers.
Shades of Tommy Mangan.
I was just going to say, taking after our
Who just
Tommy Mangan.
Finishing his first season at Boston College.
Okay, and Dr. Will, I will pass, I'm going to pass over to you, but then I'm going to all go out of order.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. So how much prouder can we be of everything that our kids are accomplishing? And tonight is a difficult night for me in some ways, but it's also important for us to take a pause and think about what has just occurred in our community. You know, sometimes we don't see the thread that's in this room right now that literally is connecting every single one of us. It's here. Sometimes we don't notice it. We lost a child in our community this week, and we send our condolences to Alessia's family. And we also lost a person who never met Alessia, but had an effect on her life. And I think the lesson we have to take away from life is what do we give when we have the opportunity to give it, and what does it mean to us? So you don't know who Harvey Geller is, and Harvey Geller was actually doing the work to make this community more receptive to all of its children before I got here. We are all connected when we do the same kind of work, when the purpose of our lives is connected around how do we lift each other up. And so I watched Preston Community do what it always does so beautifully, which is wrap its arms around kids in moments of joy and in moments of tragedy. But we should never forget that there are people that come before us that create the space for that to happen. You know, when I think about our community, what makes me most proud is the way our PTAs behave, the way our faculty behaves, the way every employee behaves about caring for every human being. And so while it is a very difficult moment for me as a superintendent, there's nothing worse than losing a child, it's also a comfort to know that we have this connection all the time, that it's always there, and that we lead lives that matter. You know, I had the great privilege of speaking at Mr. Geller's service, and what I reminded the community is some people demand that we be better. He was one of those people, and so his life affected a child 30 years later that he never met. Let's never forget that when we do this work, we're not doing it just for now. We're doing it for what we leave. And so I'm actually happy in some ways. No one ever wants to see someone taken from us, but it is incredibly powerful to know that the community that she found herself in cared enough and made a difference for the life that she had. Now we're going to shift, just like that, to a moment of great joy and great pride. We're going to take some things out of order tonight. This is a particular joy for me because I've watched the individual we're going to talk about in a few minutes just blossom and grow as a human being and as a leader over the last several years. But we're going to shift it back to our board president for a moment of wonder and thanks.
Okay. Thank you. So at this time, we're going to go partially out of order, and we're going to take, moving on to the personnel report and take item A3 out of orders. Do I have a motion to approve, under certificated personnel, A3, Antonia Simeo, probationary elementary principal, Harrison Avenue. Do I have a motion to approve?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
Questions or comments?
Yes. Comments. First of all, I want to thank my two colleagues to my left who did an extraordinary job of leading this search because I would not want to follow Valerie Himes after 16 extraordinary years. And of course, she's here tonight to help in the beginning of the passing of the torch. I couldn't ask for somebody to be more thoughtful or gracious about how we're going to care for that next person. You actually just explained everything I needed to do, right, in the way you live your life with that kind of purpose. But we, this was a very fierce competition. We had highly qualified candidates and wonderful candidates. But Antonia emerged in the end as what we knew she was, extraordinary, ridiculously hardworking, the best handwriting in the known universe. She actually has a font. You can go look it up. But it was her ability to narrate her life and how that life has informed her purpose and what she hopes to become as a principal that I think moved so many of you here tonight who were on the committees, and we thank you for your time and effort. So it is with extraordinary pride that we are, I don't even like the word promoting, we are elevating Antonia to a position where her influence will be directly on families for a sustained period of time. Her special ed colleagues are here tonight. They are excited and also angry, understandable.
Why are you surprised?
Okay. Well, we'll talk about that another night. Let's just say that's a big hole to fill in the organization, and we'll leave that to that side of the room. But I'm hoping that the board will act on my recommendation when I shut up. So having said all that...
All in favor?
Aye.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
The new principal of Harrison Avenue School, effective July 1st. Let's be clear.
So we're going to, oh.
Do you want to say something?
No, no, no. I'm just confirming it's August 1st.
It's August 1st, yeah. Well, I know you want to go to Italy, but we're not going to let that happen. Okay.
Yes, it is August 1st. Says so right here. Okay, we're going to take a brief five-minute break to congratulate and then send everyone home.
So we can do our work that you don't want to stay for.
Yes.
Okay. Thanks, everybody. We'll see you in a minute.
Okay. One brief moment before everyone goes home for the evening and we carry on with our business, but Dr. Will has a very important...
Well, it's important to me, quite seriously. And first of all, I'm sorry. It's been a very difficult night. Obviously, I'm overwhelmed with emotion on both sides, both sadness and extreme joy. And I talked about how grateful I was to Brian and Lisa for their help in the search. But when I was first starting to look around, particularly at our own team, I asked our principals, who amongst our team would you think has the intellectual capacity, the emotional intelligence, and the durability to be a principal? And I just need to say out loud, it was our high school principal, Kim Bukema, who said to me, absolutely Antonia. And so that's what started me to really think deeply about that. And of course, if you know Antonia, she's completely humble. I brought that idea forward. She didn't say, yes, I can do it. She said, let me think carefully about it. I'm intrigued by it, but I want to make sure that, you know, I take it seriously. So I just need to say that I talked about how people connect, and Kim knew immediately what we needed, and it just fills my heart with joy that somebody on the team was the person that put you forward because they worked directly with you and saw you in that light. So thank you, Kim. And with that, maybe now we get to the stuff that's not as much fun, and the rest of you can go home and have a wonderful night.
Yes, have a wonderful night.
Thank you for letting me do that.
And congratulations, Antonia. Yeah.
Congratulations, Madam Principal.
Do you want to stay here?
He wants to stay. We'll let him stay.
Okay. Okay. Do I have a motion to close the business meeting?
Motion.
Second? Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Do I have a motion to open the public hearing for the 2025-26 budget?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. This is a requirement under New York State education law that we hold an annual budget hearing. We will present what has already been adopted by the school board, and if there's questions at the end from any member of the public, we're happy to engage in it. We will go, I won't say quickly, but we're not going to go in depth because we've talked about this so much. This is a formality. Everything that we're sharing with you is now available on our website. You can go to our homepage to find it. You can find it on our Board of Education page. You can also find it on the business page. So just to quickly recap, the way this works is I work with my entire team to develop an educational plan that we think is sound. The first question I ask the board, and this board is pretty prudent, that do you want to live within the tax levy cap? And the answer is go and create the best budget you can within the cap and then talk to us. We had some challenges this year, pretty significant challenges, a growing enrollment, which continues to grow. It's very challenging for us to develop a long-term plan because we don't know what's coming down the road. The formula is such that it's very fluid. It's based on lots of variables we don't control, and as of this moment, we still don't know what our state aid is, even though we were required to adopt the budget on a date certain. The state does not live by its own standard to adopt a budget. Innovation and improvement are always a challenge because when you have limited resources and a growing enrollment, you have to highly prioritize what exactly it is you want to do. So I meet with the leadership team. We go through a whole series of things. We meet with the board as a whole, the Board Budget Subcommittee, which Mrs. Jaberga chairs, the Citizens Budget Advisory Committee. We meet with every member of our leadership team multiple times, and eventually we present to the board a final budget. They're actively involved throughout that process, and then they choose to adopt or not. Fortunately for me, they always seem to be paying close attention, and they adopted the budget. And now the next big step is to put it before the community for a budget vote on May 20th. I will say to you that we are the only entity, in case you're watching at home and you're not aware, that is required to put their budget up for a public vote. The state doesn't do it. The county doesn't do it. The town doesn't do it. It's only school budgets that are required to be put up for a public vote. This is what we hope to accomplish this year, strengthen our curriculum coherence. What does that really mean? It means we're going to finally become, we hope, a K-12 international baccalaureate district, so students will be learning in the same framework from kindergarten through high school. Next one. Okay. What is in the budget? Same thing that's almost always in there. It's always research-based. It's nobody's good idea. We do our homework. We want every student to feel valued and seen, so every experience is designed to meet the needs of individual kids. I mentioned the challenge of long-term planning because of the tax levy cap, our growing enrollment, which is not easily predictable. We do the best we can with a demographic study, and there's always a flux in state and federal funding. Right now, the current federal budget proposes removing all funding for E&amp;L students at the federal level. We don't know if that'll happen, but that's on the list of possibilities. So what are we doing here? The most important thing that we try to do is maintain class sizes. We think we can do that in this budget. We do have some growing enrollment at the high school in two ways, more kids and kids taking more courses. So we always have to address that. I mentioned the continuity. Most important here, and you heard me talk about it a little bit earlier, is to maintain the high quality of our teaching. So professional development's at the top of my list always, right behind class sizes. It remains fully intact. We currently have the middle years program and the IB diploma program. All of our kids from 6 to 12 participate in some measure of the IB program, and our hope is to put in the PYP program before the year is up. We continue to offer summer programs, including college essay writing, Bridges to Literacy, our summer school. What's not on this list, and I'll put it back in, is it's a reminder that the board continues to support and pay for every child's exam in an IBAP PSAT or PACT exam as well. There's tiny little bits in the budget to improve some opportunities. We're going to be appointing a teaching assistant to expand technical theater, because so many kids are involved and interested in it, and we're going to do a little bit more around supervision of the fitness center so that we can expand the hours because more and more kids are using it. Just a reminder that last year before we got to July, we had to add unbudgeted positions because of growing enrollment. So Tim was tasked not only with funding those positions, but he has to fund them in this proposed budget. So they didn't exist. We took it out of fund balance. Now he's building them into the base, and that was 2.7 positions from last year's budget that find their way into this year's budget. This is what I just mentioned, the teaching assistant, the Part 9 Fitness Center, a little bit of supervision around lunch and recess, and a part-time speech pathologist to support special education needs. Just go back one second. The number on that slide is 486,000. That's a critical number to remember because, remember, we are stuck within a tax levy cap, and that's just to manage enrollment growth. And there we go, enrollment growth. Dr. Ludwig?
Sure. I believe this is the only slide we have in the slide deck this evening, but it's just to try to give a picture of our anticipated enrollment. We always commission a demographic study every year to try to best predict the future, and that includes looking at a number of variables, birth rates and housing starts in our community. And it's an inexact science to predict enrollment in the future, but the trend clearly indicates not just future trend, but even the last couple of years. We're at a high watermark at almost 3,800 students right now. But if you look at the trend line heading out into the next few years, we look to crest 4,000 students by 2026, '27. So trying to plan for the enrollment, it's a good news story because it means families are moving to our community. We think that's largely the result of people being attracted to our schools, but we also have to be able to plan for it. So staffing, class space, those present certain challenges for us. So we're certainly trying to keep up with the trends that are happening in our community, and... and that's reflected in this budget as well.
And if you're looking for more information on that, you can see prior presentations. There are a whole bunch of slides, and when we go to the PTAs in the next couple of weeks, we'll be presenting all of that information once again.
Okay. I think I'll take it from here.
Yes, please.
Before I do, I just would like to, to take a moment just to thank a few people. This is the last time that I'll have the opportunity to kind of address our budget plan for the year. So I just, I do want to make a couple thank yous for individuals that have really played a big part in the budget development process. Obviously, first of all, I'd like to thank Samantha Jaberga and the Budget Committee, which is Kelly Kozak and Jerome Valenti. You know, your, your feedback to me and the rest of our administrative team has been, you know, really valuable and so helpful to us. So thank you very much for, for your help and your leadership throughout the process. So it means a lot to us. Obviously, my business office team, especially, you know, Joe Sisery, Valerie Minjoni, Michelle DeCarlo, who does a lot of our payroll projections. But, you know, these individuals are really my right-hand folks during the process, and, you know, I just have a great, I owe them a great debt of gratitude for all their work. And you'd be amazed of, you know, the legal notices and the documents and the publications that we do kind of behind the scenes. Most people don't see that part, but it does, adds up, and it's, it's a very tedious process. So I'd like to thank them very much. And then finally, a couple other people, you know, Michael Howar, Joan Tiberzi. These are individuals that do our website design, our publications, all the kind of the PR. All these nice, you know, photos that you see here, that all comes from them. So I'd like to thank them. And then finally, you know, Lou, Brian, Lisa, our administrative cabinet team. You know, we, you know, we, we meet all the time, and we try to solve very complex problems, especially this year. It seemed like it was a very difficult process, but, you know, it takes multiple people and a lot of different perspectives to try to get to this, this point. So I'd like to thank them for, for all their time and effort, too. So with that, I'll, I'll move forward and...
Yeah, you're not getting off that easily. We also have to thank you because this was one of the most challenging budget years we've had in our history, and you kept pushing us, pushing us, pushing us, and eventually we did crack this very complicated chestnut and wouldn't have done it without your technical expertise and your partnership. So thank you, Tim.
Thank you. I'm going to, I'm going to go through these slides pretty quick. You've seen them before, but again, I just want to give a quick overview. Obviously, we, we know we had some challenges this year. The sustained national inflation over the last four years has been extremely challenging. This upcoming year will be 2.95%, of, which is really the inflation number. And again, we're limited by the lesser of the CPI or 2%. So it puts us behind the eight ball right off, right off the bat, as, you know, as you know. Operational expenses were, were challenging this year, health insurance, liability, electricity. And then, of course, the expected student enrollment growth of 230 kids over the next two-year period, looking forward based on our demographic projection. So that, that's, that'll be challenging as well. All in all, looking at budget changes of about $4.8 million and on the expenditure side, employee salary costs really were, were very in line and reasonable compared to maybe some of the prior years, only increased by 1.7%. And that includes the 5.8 positions that we added, and it also includes 13 teaching positions that, that we were able to realize in terms of retirement savings for, for the upcoming year. So that, that really played a huge part in being able to, to keep that number at, at that 1.74% increase. Teacher retirement, employee plans, very, very low. Dino and I were talking about this before. It's probably one of the lowest years we've, we've seen in, in many, many years. So that was helpful. Unfortunately, the health insurance was a little higher than we would have liked this year, and, you know, that obviously that was a, a major driver of the budget. Again, 4.8 million was the, was the expenditures. We have a total budget next year of 146.4 million. All New York State school districts must present their budget to the public in three main components, which is the program administrative and capital components. So you can see, obviously, the majority of our budget is in the program component, which makes up all of our student instruction, transportation, athletics, anything centering or revolving around our, our student instruction would, would be in the program component. We also take a lot of pride in, in trying to continually upgrade our facilities every year, and next year is no different. We, we plan to set aside about $1.9 million, which will be transferred into our capital fund for specific projects that will improve the, you know, the facilities. Looking at some auditorium improvements at Harrison Avenue. Obviously, we, we try to do four tile replacements every year. Looking at maybe doing some boiler efficiency upgrades, particularly at Parsons Elementary School is a school we have in mind. We always try to do some HVAC and some building management control upgrades, and we, we have some, some nice ideas for some bleachers and scoreboard upgrades at, at the high school and at the middle school. So looking forward to, to doing that over the course of the next school year. In terms of revenue, again, you know, trying to meet the, the expenditure budget was challenging, so we knew we had to try to come up with an increase in revenue of about 4.8 million. The real property taxes are up 3.8 million, which is an increase of 3.1% within the, within the tax cap levying calculation. Won't spend too much more time on this. The board has seen, seen these updates. I guess I would say, as Lou alluded to early, earlier, that foundation aid tentatively is, is scheduled to increase by 2% or about 71,000. We still do not have the aid runs as a result of the, of the passage of the state budget, which I believe is, is imminent. But again, so we're, we're using a projection there of 2%. Hopefully, that's what it ends up being. But again, our, our biggest driver of our, of our aid this year was in our private access cost aid, which is a reimbursement for special education services that we provide in the previous year. So as we've talked about, more and more students needing special services, the benefit to us is that the state does reimburse us the following year for some of those costs. So that is, that is driving that particular revenue line. And the last thing I would just mention is the use of fund balance. You know, we, we, we had to, you know, increase our use of fund balance next year to try to balance the budget. It was very challenging to try to meet the, the expenditure total, so we, we did allocate about $300,000 more in fund balance next year so that we wouldn't have to reduce instructional programs or, or increase class sizes. So that was really the ticket that was, that allowed us to get to a final budget. So to sum up what our tax impact projections are, we have a current-year levy, which is the total amount we collect from our, our taxpayers, of $123.7 million. The maximum tax levy limit per the calculation next year is an increase of 3.1% or 127.5 million. And the actual levy is going to be that exact amount. We're, we're dedicated to go right to the maximum next year to try to make sure that we maintain all of the, all the programs and, and offerings that we possibly can. The positive of that is that because we have increases in our assessment growth, that the estimated tax rate increase will, will be below 3%, estimated to be about 2.8%. Again, that's based on current assessment data we have from the assessor. Sometimes that changes between now and August, but it's our best indication of what that would be at this particular point. And, you know, the next couple of slides just show what the history of our tax levy increases have been compared to what the CPI has been, or, you know, in the, the rate of inflation. And we're very proud to say that, you know, the tax levy increase on average has been below what the CPI increase has been. And, you know, we, we certainly take a lot of pride in, let me just make sure I got a couple of notes here about this. And the financial strength of the district, and it's, it's evident when, when you look at the fact that we're, we're still maintained as a AAA rating by Standard &amp; Poor's for outstanding credit worthiness. The district has been awarded, you know, outstanding financial reporting for, for many, many years. And the district has the third lowest true value tax rate of any district in the county. And, you know, the true value tax rate is really a metric that business officials and other officials use to compare the actual tax burden of the community with other school districts. And whereas in one community, the assessor might value the homes at 100% of actual value, whereas in another school district, such as Harrison, we may only value homes at 1% of the actual assessed value. So you need a mechanism to fairly compare tax rates across communities. And what the true value tax rate says is the actual tax paid compared to the actual home value. And when you look at Harrison's true value tax rate of 11.48, you can see that it's a tremendous, it's tremendously affordable for the tax that we pay compared to the actual home value compared to all the other school districts in the county. So again, a source of pride for us here in the district should also be a source of pride for the community because they can rest assured that they're getting excellent value for the amount of tax that they pay. I think the last thing I would mention is that, as, as Dr. Will indicated on our website, is a complete budget report that includes every single line of our, of our budget. So you can, you can see line by line what the budget is. It includes the property tax report card. We have some academic report card information that we're required to, to present to the community. We've got the administrative salary disclosure, a tax exemption impact report, and, you know, a bunch of other things in there, too. So if you would like to see the entire budget, please go to our website. The, the address is there, and it's, it's very easily accessible. So we would, we would encourage you to do that. And the final thing I would say is that the school budget vote and trustee election will take place on Tuesday, May 20th, from 7:00 to 9:00 p.m. And you can vote at your neighborhood elementary school. So all four elementary schools will have voting. I would say that the Purchase Elementary School will be not challenging, but it'll be maybe a little different than what you've seen before because we, we are starting construction there. So we have made allowances for people to make sure they have clear access to be able to get in and vote at that particular area. So with that, I would take any questions from anybody, but if not, that will conclude our, our presentation.
Any questions? I would just like to reflect back to you, Tim, and to just say thank you, clearly for your hard work, but, you know, your strategic vision and ability to manage this and such a complex process while really holding our top priorities in place. And I know that there are certain things that we like really don't like to budget, you know, to budge on. So thank you for doing it in such a strategic way. So we thank you and your entire team and office and the business office for all your hard work.
Thank you.
Yes.
You're here.
So at this time, do I have a motion to close the public hearing for the 2025-26 budget?
Motion.
Should you just say, if any members of the public, or just mention the name of the public here?
Public. If any member of the public would like to address the board, you may do so by approaching the podium, but...
Seeing none.
It's seeing none. No one is present. At this time, I would close the public hearing for the 2025. Do I have a motion to close the public hearing for the 2025-26 budget?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Do I have a motion to open the public hearing to discuss amending tax exemptions for qualified persons 65 years of age and older?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And we're going to ask Tim to just explain to the public what exactly the board is being asked to act upon.
Yeah, thank you. So as you, as you indicated, there are two additional public hearings this evening, and the purpose is to consider changes to our existing property tax exemptions for qualified individuals aged 65 years and older, and also qualified persons with disabilities. Okay? So what I'll do is I'll talk about both of them because they're really interchangeable in terms of, of the, of the, of the resolution. But the real property tax law provides that a school district may grant a partial exemption based on the designated income scale for individuals that fit those two, those two categories. And it's that scale that's proposed to change this evening, okay? For both groups equally, although we're going to vote on them separately in a few moments. So specifically, we are proposing to follow the thresholds recently passed by the town of Harrison and also Westchester County. And the current annual income levels are between 29,000 and 38,000. So if your income is between 29,000 and 38,000, there are tiers of the exemption levels where individuals can apply to the assessor for the town of Harrison and receive a partial exemption on their property taxes. So we would be making a change this evening to the levels between $50,000 and $58,400. So again, moving from 29,000 to 38,000 to 50,000 as the low end of the income scale to 58,400. Okay? So making this change would allow, obviously, more individuals to qualify in the community because the income levels would be, would be higher, and that would lower their tax burden for, based on their particular income level. And should the board approve these resolutions, these resolutions later in the meeting, these changes would take effect for the 2025 tax roll, which would affect the '26, '27 tax year. Okay? So although we're passing it now, it really wouldn't take effect until September of 2026. All right? So with that, I would be happy to take any questions, but the actual income levels are included in the resolution, so anybody who's curious about what the levels are can, can obviously go and look at the resolutions themselves there.
Does anyone have any questions or comments? At this time, if any member of the public would like to address the board, you may do so by approaching the podium, podium, but seeing none. Do I have a motion to close the public hearing for tax exemptions for qualified persons 65 years of age and older?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
Questions and comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Do I have a motion to open the public hearing to discuss the tax exemptions for qualified persons with disabilities?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That was already explained soon. At this time, if any member of the public would like to address the board, but I do not see anyone present. Do I have a motion to close the public hearing for tax exemptions for qualified persons with disabilities?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Do I have a motion to reopen the business meeting?
Before we do, we're still under the superintendent's report. Can I just say a couple things about...
Oh, yeah.
Because we've been jumping around tonight. First of all, thanks. I think Kelly Kozak could be an air traffic controller after tonight. Really good job. And Tim, thanks for getting us through all these things. And if the board approves this, I know it'll be a boon to people who are struggling with income and taxes, so appreciate that. I just did want to mention, Tim mentioned briefly, but you will be getting a letter from Mr. Gutterman shortly, just alerting the community that many of our construction projects are underway. The high school field, for example, the baseball field, is already in the demolition phase, and we are approaching a breaking ground any moment now at the Purchase Elementary School. Parents, if you're listening, we need your full and total cooperation to help keep children, you, and members of our faculty and staff safe because it's a very complex addition. As you know, we're putting new safety features at the entry points of every one of our elementary schools. Purchase happens to be one of the more complicated ones, so the main entrance of the Purchase Elementary School will be closed for the better part of a year. So we have an alternative plan that you will hear in detail from Mr. Gutterman, and we will have people out there when we implement this in about a week to beget you ready, and it will be available for voting. Everybody will have access to everything that they need. But what is critical is for people to cooperate and follow the rules because there will be construction crews on site, and you will not have access to the main building through the primary entrance. There will be access. It will be handicapped accessible. We worked out all of those details, but please, everybody, now is the time for parents to please cooperate and follow the rules. If you have a question or concern, address it to your principal, but we need you to be flexible because there is always some, let's just say this out loud to everybody, inconvenience when we try to improve facilities. We can't do this all in the summer or we'll stretch on forever, and so we, we want you to be well apprised of that and cooperative. So thank you for that. Was one other thing I wanted to mention? I mentioned the high school turf field. Also, please steer clear of all construction sites at the high school. Also, please steer clear of all construction sites at the high school. Having said that now, I'd like to suggest that we go back into our business meeting. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Do I have a motion to reopen the business meeting?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Moving on to our personnel report, I will take on consent unless anyone objects. Seeing none, A, certificated personnel, one resignation, two resignation for the purpose of retirement, four change of status, B, non-certificated personnel, one resignation for the purpose of retirement, two regular appointment, SED clearance received, three regular appointment, SED clearance submitted, C, other, one student observer, intern, SED clearance received, two contracted service provider. Do I have a motion to approve the personnel report?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Moving on to the administrative report, I will take on consent unless anyone objects. Seeing none, A, approval of the physics club field trip to Jackson Township, New Jersey for Physics Day, B, acceptance of donation from the 1898 Foundation, C, acceptance of donation from Judy Soli, D, acceptance of donation from the Samuel J. Preston PTA, E, acceptance of donation from the Samuel J. Preston PTA, F, approval of ice hockey manager, G, approval of Westchester-Putnam School Board Association annual meeting ballot, H, appointment of impartial hearing officer, I, approval of CSC CPSC minutes, J, approval of CSC CPSC recommendations, K, approval of CSC CPSC annual reviews. Do I have a motion to approve the administrative report?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
Questions or comments? I would like to say thank you for the many donations, the 1898 Foundation, the donation from Judy Soli, two from the Samuel J. Preston PTA. So thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Moving on to the finance and facilities report, I will take on consent unless anyone objects. Seeing none, A, adoption of resolution to amend the maximum levels for certain tax exemptions for qualified persons 65 years of age or older, B, adoption of resolution to amend the maximum levels for certain tax exemptions of qualified persons with disabilities, C, authorization to enter in a purchase contract with Diamond Defense LLC, D, amendment to contract for educational services, Rye City School District, E, authorization to enter into a contract with Policy Find, F, 2024-25 appropriation transfers. Do I have a motion to approve the finance and facilities report?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Our next regularly scheduled business meeting will take place on May 21st at 9:00 a.m. here at the Lewis M. Klein Middle School. Do I have a motion to close the business meeting?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We are adjourned. Have a wonderful night.